Welcome to the September regular meeting of the Kanohei Neighborhood Board. This meeting is in session. The business is the filling of vacancies on the board. We still have an opening in Sub District Two. It's by the Windward Mall area. Is there anyone here or online that wants to serve the board and their community from that district? Hearing none. We'll move on to city-state community monthly reports and discussion. First up Honolulu Fire Department. Okay, let's move to Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, board members and members of the community. My name is Lieutenant Drew Caggy. I come out of the Kanohei Station. I'm here with Sergeant Brandon Noguchi, who is also in charge of supervising the area. And I have Officer Jared Atkins online here, who will be presenting the stats for tonight.
Good evening. I'm Officer Jared Atkins with District Four Community Policing Team. The stats for August 2025 for Kanohei were there were zero motor vehicle thefts versus one the previous month. There were four burglaries in August versus two the previous month. There were 12 thefts in August versus seven the previous month. There were three U M Vs or car break-ins in August versus zero the previous month. There was one robbery versus two the previous month. And we can take any questions or concerns from the community.
Before we go to questions and concerns, board, I wanted to say what I just want to let you guys know what we're doing on the patrol side of it. Sergeant Noguchi is in charge of the Kanohei area. But we have stepped up traffic enforcement on the streets. If you've noticed in the news that the traffic fatalities have risen. And we want to do our part to make your community as safe as we can. So you'll see more officers out there doing traffic stops, roadblocks and so forth. We're going to start installing traffic enforcement and also roving roadblocks to curb the drunken driving. So you'll see more, it's more, it's both enforcement and education. So for the past month, I can tell you for the past month, the Kanohei District has led the department in traffic warnings and also traffic citations. So we're out there, we want to make it as safe as possible. You'll see more of us on the road. Any questions?
There is a question right off the top of my head. I had to stop riding my bicycle just because it's so unsafe on the road. Every time somebody rides past me and they're right next to me, they're always on their phone or looking down somehow distracted. And there was a period, maybe a couple of years ago, that was a big deal and it was being enforced. Has that kind of fallen off?
No, we still, we're still out there giving you the cellphone violations out there as we come across them. We do that, do that, yes.
Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? I see Mr. Sakamoto is next to me. Go ahead.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the report, Donald Sakamoto, at-large member. I'd like to thank HPD, Kanohei District Four, for, my friend works at Kanohei Marine Base. When he goes home, he sees your officers in the media to watch people going towards the Kaido cut-off and appreciate what you folks are doing on that. Still have some speeding with noisy motorcycles, but what can we do there? They go out all kinds of times and I know that you folks are busy with other assignments, but thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Honolulu Police Department?
Mahalo, if I may please.
Any online? Go ahead, Dale.
Thank you. I would just would like to make-
This is Dale Carstensen.
I'm sorry. From the board, just a request. There is Lilipuna, which there is a 15 mile per hour speed limit. And there is a very sharp term as you near the entrance into Coconut Island. And I would say on any given day, they're at 40 miles an hour. And there's been three incidents where people have either on their bicycle or walking have actually had to jump into the foliage. The other side of the road is very dangerous because we have rocks sliding down. Is there any way we could put more monitoring into that area? Or even if we have to think about a speed bump for the safety of the people there?
Yes, absolutely. So we can add, I can add that to the list of areas for traffic enforcement. Speed bump might come from another department, but definitely can add that to our areas of concern.
Awesome, thank you. Any other questions for Honolulu Police Department? All right, thank you very much. Next up, Marine Corps Base Hawaii.
All right, hey, good evening. For those online who don't know me, I'm Colonel Bevan, the commander of Marine Corps Base Hawaii. And before bringing Ms. Kalahiva, I just want to take a moment to thank this body for your patience during our recent airshow. I acknowledge that there's an increase in noise and traffic, but it's just an opportunity to open the base up and to welcome the community. They maybe kind of see and participate in some activities and fellowship that they don't normally get to. So I just want to thank you for the patience as we executed that here last month. And then a reminder that in the next probably two weeks or so, our VMM 363 squadron will be coming back from Australia. So they'll take a few weeks off to rest and recuperate. And then probably, you know, around the end of October, beginning of November, they'll be back and flying. So our air activity will be increasing a little bit over what we've seen over the last six months. As always, if there's concerns about traffic patterns or noise or issues where maybe you think they're flying where they shouldn't be, by all means, reach out. I regularly take a look at the radar tapes and we investigate and just make sure that folks are doing what they need to do. And, you know, sometimes we get new air crew and it takes a little bit to get them up to speed. So by all means, don't hesitate to reach out and I'll certainly engage on that. If there's no questions for me, I'll turn over to Ms. Kalahiva and good to see you all again. Amen.
Okay. Hi, thanks for coming. Kim told me we met at a Windward Coalition meeting a few months ago and I want to thank you for coming. And to comment on what a joy the airshow was. I live in Keapuka Valley, which is below Wilson Tunnel. And I really appreciate how the angels go up each valley consecutively so that everyone gets an opportunity to see them. And they go right over my house and everyone's standing out in the street watching. So it's great.
Awesome, well, thank you and thank you for the patience and we're here for the community. So I'm glad you got to participate. Thank you. Kristy.
Thank you. Good evening, board. I just had a couple of updates that I wanted to share with you of the activities that are going on in the base outside of the airshow. And of course, you know, our summer has just whizzed right by because it has been full of all types of different events. So I probably should start off by saying Merry Christmas. Because I, my first conversation this evening was, okay, we need a plan for the Christmas parade and we need to make sure that we're getting in all of the requests so that the Marine Corps Base can participate in the Christmas parade. Today, we hosted General, after we hear his name, Koichiro Rancho over at the Marine Corps Base. He brought with him a delegation of businessmen from Japan. And they, the purpose of them coming was to visit the Iida Memorial. So they spent that, Colonel Bevan hosted them. It wasn't, that was a beautiful, it was a beautiful day. It was a really nice time and they were really honored to be able to come onto the Marine Corps Base and to visit the memorial. Additionally, we have had several delegations over the past couple of, about a month and a half since the airshow, it's been pretty consistent. But they come, our delegations from the Washington DC area, they come, our Jiltukuda per staff, as well as Casey's office has also come. They're coming because they want to be able to know what the community and the base are in need of. So they're working very hard for us all. Just a couple of upcoming events, our Ola Nupia Pond will have their workday on October the 4th. This has been moving along really nicely and we're seeing some good progress with clearing of the fish pond wall. Kiilei and our senior environmentalist, Lance Bookless, and our archaeologist, June Cleghorn, did a recon on Monday and discovered new areas that we're going to be able to focus on. So the three of them have been working really nicely together. This is some great progress. So the CO mentioned, if you folks have any concerns regarding the noise, our ComStrat team is working on our website. But they did provide a QR code and I printed out some for all of you. If you have a concern, you can use your phone and you can click on the QR code and it brings up the form so that you can input as much detailed information. And it asks the question, so you'll know what to put in. And this is for any type of noise or any, any noise. So not just aircraft, but even if you hear other types of training. So I have this for you and I will leave it there and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Marine Corps Base Hawaii? Mr. Sakamoto.
Thank you, Colonel, and Kristy, Donald Sakamoto, for the record. How's the drones going there on the marine base? I know there are aircraft over there that you folks use and are we still having people using lasers to point at your helicopter aircraft? That's a big thing I would hear in previous meetings at other neighborhood boards. And how's the mock-up on the school doing? I'm interested in that because I think you folks should have a great school over there for the kids on base. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Fortunately, as of late, we've not had any issues with lasers, which is important. It is a huge safety factor and can absolutely cause a mishap and as a pilot and aviator, it is very disorienting and can cause permanent damage. So fortunately, we've not had any recent incidents. And as you all know, it is a federal crime, so it is something that we take seriously. The school is progressing. We were supposed to have Phase One complete in August. Our contractor is a little behind schedule. So we'll be scheduled to be complete in December. And over the Christmas break, we'll be moving from the old facilities into the new school. And that will complete Phase One of the $146 million project and then to start tearing down the old school and begin Phase Two after. But we should have all of our keiki into the new building when they come back for the, after Christmas break. Do you have something else that you're also-
I have, I have a couple of things. One has to do, and it probably not base oriented, it's probably whoever runs the housing. The dog park that they did over by North Beach, the fence is five inches too high. So any ball that you throw goes outside. Small thing. And there's, the, the grass is starting, well, the weeds are starting to come back because there's a little bit of rain over there now. It's just, you go there in the evening, there's very few people there because it's, it's a dust bowl. And it probably needs some work. So if anybody can tweak the housing folks, just to maybe clean that up a little bit, that would be great. This is a personal thing. I get phone calls every day, all day, because my, my phone, my cellphone number is when somebody Googles Marine Corps Base Hawaii, they get the hours of the base and what the base is all about and my phone number. And I've tried to get it removed.
No, that's not an accident.
Well, if it's not an accident, I'll start providing information then.
Okay, we'll see what we can do.
Appreciate that. Any other questions for Marine Corps Base Hawaii centered around me? Awesome, thanks for coming, Colonel. Appreciate it. Kristy, mahalo. Moving on to Windward Community College. Where's your panolo hat? Yes, ma'am.
Saturday, though, I'm afraid to lose it in the meantime. Aloha, my kako. I have one major, I do put stickers and pamphlets in front of everyone on the neighborhood board. And there's extras in the beginning of the room or the entrance for anyone else in the audience who wants. Saturday, a wehaka ko, we're going to have our panolo barbecue. Super excited. Um, we'll have, there's a petting zoo, there's horse rides. Somebody stole the mechanical bull out from under us while we were procuring it because state procurement is such an efficient process that while we were getting it, someone got online with their credit card and reserved it. And there's only two on the whole island and we tried to go after it. So it looks like we're having panolo sumo wrestling, which is going to be super fun, sumo. Um, so a tradition on this side of the island as well. So there's a barbecue plate, there's a preorder code on all of the pamphlets. I'd recommend if you're coming, it's a, it's will be huge panolo sized portions, pulled pork, huli huli chicken, sausage, corn on the cob, baked beans, I think, and cornbread and some other like mac salad and pickled vegetables. So it'll be a great, it's a nice plate and there's only a limited amount that day. So that's why if you can, if you're coming, I'd recommend pre-buying the barbecue plate. There's a vegetarian version too. I have no idea what's on our vegetarian barbecue plate. I'm really sorry about that. And yeah, the whole community is invited. Everything except the country store and the barbecue plate are completely free. There'll be games for the keiki. Uncle Calvin Ho is going to teach us how to make whips out of pow. I'm really excited about that. There's bull roping. It's going to be a great event. And then on Monday, like icing on the cake, we will have our accreditation site visit from the ACCJC, which is our accrediting body. And I'll report back on how we do next time for that. So that's all I got.
I'm sure it'll be bang gangbusters.
One can hope.
Both the accreditation and the panolo. Mahalo. Any questions for Windward Community College? Mahalo, artists.
Oh, mahalo.
Uh, next up, board briefs and discussion. We have a brief in the Mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts. Anybody online to make that presentation for us? Are we in person? Awesome.
So this, this was very quick, extremely efficient. Thank you so much. Aloha, everyone. My name is Marion Kadora and I'm with the Mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts. I have a few slides for you all to take a look at. I'm here to present on the Wahipana Project Story Places. This is a grant project that the Mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts won in 2024 through Bloomberg Philanthropies. It's a million dollar grant for temporary public art. We have already launched two phases and we're going into our third phase. That's going to be here in Kanohei at Ho'omalihia Botanical Garden. So I'm here to just give a little bit of insight into that. If you could just go to the next slide. This is a map of various sites that we're working with. Phase two is going to be Ho'omalihia and Haleva Beach Park. You can go to the next slide. And we're working with different Kanakamaoli artists, contemporary artists, creating public art that engages the story, the storied places of Oahu. And really, this, this grant, which was about finding intersections with social issues that were pertinent to Oahu. And the, the kind of main issue that we're working with is the idea of tourism over tourism and how to engage not only visitors, but our residents in these various places that many people frequent, but often don't know the mo'olelo or the stories of that place. And through engagement with mo'olelo and contemporary art, our hope is that people will kind of tread more carefully, more generously in these places. And I'll just give a couple, just so you can see a little bit of the projects that we're working on. You can go to the next slide. And this is the bus. So this is actually one of our sites. You may have seen this traversing around town. It tells the story of a hi'iaka traversing around the island, learning the mo'olelo, the melee, and becoming kama'aina to place. You can go to the next slide. Coco Crater Botanical Garden. This is a photography project that tells the mo'olelo of Coco Crater. You can go to the next slide. Another picture and go to the next slide. And this is at Kopilani Park. Keal Anthony created a graphic design project that reconnects the, the presence of Papa Ena Ena Heal that is just right beside this, this site that is now the site of La Pietra School. So this is kind of an insight to the kinds of projects that we're working with, connecting the stories, creating these projects that become kind of portals for people to access these places and the layered histories of these places. You can go to the next slide. And then, I'm sorry, you can go, go down a couple because I'll get into Ho'omalihia and then the next one. So this is a map of Ho'omalihia where you see the triangle on the map. This is the, the part of the gardens that we're going to be utilizing. It's a part of the garden that often people don't go to. There is a viewing point that many people go to and weddings happen there. And this is just kind of a little bit more inward. You can go to the next slide. And on this slide, there's the different pu'u of the Ko'olaus. And so Ka'ilichun is the artist. She's going to be creating a large-scale sculpture. You can go to the next slide. That becomes a vessel and a viewing portal to, to view these different pu'u. And each of the pu'u have different mo'olelo. And so this project will be kind of becoming an access to the stories of, of the pu'u, but also connecting to the importance of, of the rain and access to water that then connects to the watersheds and connects to the ahupua of Kanohei. And so this will become kind of a site for people to come and respect the Ko'alaus. Again, it's a site that a lot of people don't normally access. So we'll have different signage that guides people to this place. In the visitor center, we'll have also an access point that guides people to this place. And we just hope that people will come with respect and an opportunity to just connect with the Ko'alaus and the mo'olelo of that place in, in a different way. And I'll open up to questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Are there any questions? Mr. Sakamoto.
Sakamoto here, thank you for your presentation. As a blind individual, I was what at Mark's garage? They have some artwork and they had some QR codes where my smartphone could scan and tell me what this picture is all about and who was the artist and why not. Will you have something like that at the park so we can? I could see before, but now I'm totally blind. But I can understand what the artwork looks, who designed it and what it means.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. We will have labels that will describe the artworks. And the way that we usually approach the labels is we describe the work visually that has information about the materials, the size, and then kind of a visual description of it as well as the mo'olelo. So I really appreciate that comment and I think that is, we'll definitely keep that in mind that it is accessible for different folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Rachel, are we okay? Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. And then I was just going to hand out, I have these stickers. That way you can look up, it has a QR code that accesses our website. So if you want to learn-
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
And while those stickers are being distributed, our next presentation. Thank you. Is Hawaii Climate Action Pathways Report. Bill Unra.
Hello. I'm actually online and my name is Jonathan and I'm filling in for Bill tonight.
Okay, do your worst.
Yeah, so I was hoping to make it there in person, wasn't able to, but I'm hoping I can share a screen. Hopefully that works here. So I'm clicking on share. Can people see this PowerPoint slide?
We can see.
Awesome. Right on. Okay, yeah, so thanks for having me. My name is Jonathan Lance. I'm with the State Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission, also known as just the Climate Commission for CCMAC for short. And I'm here to share about a report that we just released a draft of, which is our Climate Action Pathways. The draft, we released it to the public on August 1st. And we're currently in a public commentary period, which is open until September 30th. So we're just trying to get the word out there, going to as many neighborhood boards as we can, do as much outreach as we can to just kind of let people know what it's about, that this report is there for people to give us feedback on. We created a online platform, which I'll go through in a second, that makes it super easy for people to kind of check it out, see what it's about, give us feedback and kind of help be a process in terms of shaping the plan. Yeah. So, next slide. So for those that don't know, the State Climate Change Commission was created a few years back as kind of a response to, you know, seeing the increasing threats of different climate change hazards, whether it's wildfires and droughts and flooding, sea level rise, coastal erosion. And the commission kind of exists as a sort of a coalition of representatives from a bunch of different public offices. All four counties are represented. So yeah, offices like Department of Agriculture, Department of Transportation, OHA, Hawaiian Homes. We've got a number of legislators that are part of the commission. And the State Climate Commission kind of serves to just sort of coordinate climate action planning across all these different entities and kind of have like a consolidated effort between everyone. So, you know, I think each of these, each of the four counties in Hawaii have sort of developed their own climate action plans. And we've built upon that to sort of bring everything together and make some recommendations for how we can address what we're going to be experiencing in the coming decades. So our Climate Action Pathways, or CAP for short, is basically the plan that we've developed as the state's roadmap for climate action. So it looks across eight key sectors from energy and buildings to transportation, agriculture, forestry and land use, waste and the economy. And then within those sectors, it outlines 23 priority measures. And so in terms of outreach and public feedback, those, those measures are kind of one of the main outcomes of the CAP that we really want to share with people. Since they are the practical recommendations that will lead to development of policies, programs and projects around climate resilience. So I have a later slide here that gives an overview of the types of content in those measures. So we'll get that, get to that in a sec. And yeah, just noting that the, the measures in the report, they were developed with stakeholder input. So over the past year and a half or so, there's been a lot of outreach, getting public comments, engaging with stakeholders, working in the spaces. There were numerous technical working groups that included, you know, researchers and industry professionals, consultants, to sort of help develop all these ideas. And got a ton of feedback from a lot of different channels. And then sort of boiled that down to these 23 sort of the most like pertinent, best recommendations moving forward. So yeah, those are the sort of the eight sectors that the, the current draft looks at. Those sectors are sort of geared towards mitigation of greenhouse gas emissions as, as the primary goal. And that's what we will be submitting to the EPA as sort of like satisfying their grant that funded this whole process. However, we are also developing five more chapters that are, include recommendations around building resilience. So the measures that are currently in there that people will see are towards building resilience, but it's a little bit more with greenhouse gas emissions. And then once we develop these further chapters, we can release those for public input as well. So yeah, the big update that we wanted to share is that we've got the feedback period open now until September 30th. And so what is available for the people to look at is the, the full CAP report, is the full CAP report, which is actually like 180 pages long. It's pretty technical. That's available. I'm going to share the links. People can look at that. But we also have an executive summary of it, which is about 20 pages. So definitely the executive summary is a good starting point for folks to check out. But the easiest way is going to be the online platform that we created, which I'll show you in a sec. It kind of really boils things down in a really simple way. And it's a really good way for people to sort of give their input. They can see what other people are saying. You can see comments that other people made and interact with them. And we're really just trying to find out from people like, you know, what do you like? What don't you like? What do people think is missing in these recommendations? As well as how would people like to see these actions implemented in your communities? Just recognizing that, you know, all communities across the state have different needs. And so we're really hoping people can speak up and say, hey, you know, I think this is cool, but you know, this is kind of what we're seeing on the ground where I'm at. And, you know, we'd love to see it implemented in this way. So yeah, just really trying to find ways that community voices can kind of help shape what the final plan looks like. We'd love for anyone here to engage with us on it and also share these with your family, friends and networks. Yeah, so just overview some of the guiding principles we built the CAP around. It's comprehensive, so covering the whole economy, developed with the input of community voices. We're trying to make it as concrete as possible with specific actions as well as responsible agencies for carrying out those actions. We've identified funding mechanisms too, to implement them. Aimed for innovative solutions incorporating traditional knowledge. And we've built upon plans and programs that have already been developed and just trying to continue moving forward in those directions. This chart just shows the breakdown of community feedback we've received so far. So these are just the top 10 concerns that emerged out of like over 700 comments that we received while we were developing this, just through our different outreach efforts. Yeah, so just basically you can see kind of what kind of floated to the top. Flooding is a big thing that people are concerned about, sea level rise and basin species. Clearly, there's a lot more stuff that was shared with us. These are just the top 10 concerns.
Jonathan, before you get to this very inclusive slide, I'd just like you to know that you had 10 minutes for the presentation and you're at time right now. So if you could summarize, and there's another thing that I'd like for you to do. I sent this to Bill. I'm not sure if you got wind of this. Two things. One, can you send me a copy of this PowerPoint presentation so that I may circulate among the board and post it on our Kanohe Neighborhood Board blog? And number two, could you also send one in a PDF form that I could send to our visually disabled board member so he can use his JAWS software to review this?
That'd be great. Absolutely. We'll do that. So I'm just going to drop in the chat. Right now, there is a website for our online platform. And there's my email as well. And I guess for those that can't see the screen, the website is hi-climate.cider.it. But yeah, I'll share this PowerPoint and all that. And so yeah, maybe if I could just take 60 seconds real quick to just show people.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Okay. Appreciate it. Yeah, that 10 minutes went by real quick. He's so passionate about it. Can folks see the screen right now at the browser?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is the online platform. This is sort of the landing page. Very simple instructions. It has links to the actual like the CAP reports, executive summary, full CAP. It does ask you to create an account, which is just super quick. It's free and just kind of asks you to share what age range you're in and what neighborhood, what island you're on. So we can just get a better idea of people's community's needs. And then you can navigate through these different sectors. And in these sectors, it just has the 23 recommendations. So people can click on a recommendation, they can read more about it. You can sort of rate it, like how important it is or not. You can give your opinion. You can see what other people are saying and then you can respond to it. So yeah, we would love for people to go and check out this website. I think it's pretty simple. Yeah, that's it. Thank you so much for being flexible on the time.
Are there any questions for Jonathan? Adrian. Adrian Lamb.
Adrian Lamb, Subdistrict 11. I had a question, you know, one of the things I like to try and encourage is that, you know, talk to the Department of Transportation about having walkable communities. I see that's one of your mitigation strategies. And it doesn't seem to be getting much traction with DOT, but maybe, because I think our streams in Kanohe and maybe for the rest of the islands are important connectors for our community or were connectors of our community before, and they're natural connectors. And how do you make those more walkable, manageable and a part of our community so that, you know, wherever the climate is and future changes on that, the community is more aware of the water hazards and the water resources that are in our community? So is this a funding source or a way to make that a part of the action plan to manage our streams so they're walkable, they're managed correctly, they're not an afterthought, it's overgrowing? And that, you know, the community can be using those streams for recreation or other things as a resource?
I think that is such a good idea. I don't think we have a discussion about that specifically in the report. I'm going to write it down and share with the team for sure. I would also encourage you to, if you want to go on the platform, it has a, like, you can comment on that recommendation about increasing different modes of transportation. But we also have an email there too, where you can send specific ideas and suggestions. But I think that's a great idea and I'm definitely going to communicate it to the team. But I would love to have, if you had the time and you felt comfortable, I would love to have you go check out the website and send us an email or write it down.
Thanks. So send some comments in. Thanks.
Such a cool idea. Yeah, mahalo for sharing.
Okay, Jonathan Donnelly Sakamoto, enlarged member for Kanohe Neighborhood Board. Thank you for your presentation. In early January of this year, at the state cap, I attended a Zoom platform with the chairs of the environmental committees. And they were talking about climate change for our North Shore, you know, coastal lines all over the island. Department of Transportation Service DOT was there. The question was asked, how much is it going to cost to, you know, protect our shorelines, especially the highways? They said $20 billion or more, so. That's a lot of money, but I said, where are you going to get it? They said, they still have to know where. But I appreciate that chair said about the accommodations for me. If possible, if you want to work with me, I can show you how to do it in a text format so you can change the PowerPoint and then my JAWS talking software, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Mahalo for sharing.
So Jonathan, I think I said, send it in a PDF if you can save it as a text. And that way he can stick it into his software. Thanks very much for the presentation. Just a quick, I saw the picture of all the people that were on the commission. Were they the ones that came up with the idea or was there any community solicitation to get to this point?
The idea to work on this report, this plan?
Yes.
That was actually like it's a nationwide effort. So from my understanding, this project was funded through a grant from the EPA, the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant. And it's something that many states are working on. So my understanding is that was sort of the like impetus for creating this was the state acquired funding from the EPA to carry out this plan to come up with statewide mitigation and adaptation recommendations. However, I came on to the team last May when things were kind of already underway. So I don't know for sure exactly how it all played out. But I can ask and shoot you an email for sure.
Thank you. Do you, I think you have, Bill has my email.
Yes.
So you'll be able to send those things to me. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Yes, thanks for having me.
Fire department. Okay, well, that completes our board briefs and discussion. And the fire department has shown up. So why don't you guys go ahead and take the microphone and jump back in where we were? Yeah, right there.
All right, good evening. I am acting captain Kyle Fuller at Kanohe Fire Station on the engine. So last month, there was a request for information about our tsunami response. During our recent tsunami threat, HFD followed standard operating procedures. Affected station's equipment and personnel were relocated and the HFD's incident management team was assembled. In addition, the city's emergency operations center was activated. And with our public safety partners, we were prepared to modify emergency response operations accordingly. Now, in August, statistics, we had three structured fires, four nuisance fires and five activated alarms with no fire, 126 medical calls, one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian, nine motor vehicle crashes. And a fire safety tip, about lithium ion batteries in your home. They store a lot of energy in a small place. They can start a fire or explode when overcharged or damaged. So some tips to be safe with these batteries. One, only buy listed products that has a safety certification mark such as UL, ETL or CSA. This means the battery meets important safety standards. Charge your devices safely. Use the cords that came with it to charge it. Charge on a hard surface. Don't overcharge your device. Unplug it when it's full. Recycle your batteries responsibly. Don't throw them in the trash. Recycle at a safe battery recycling location. And you can visit callto recycle.org to find a recycling spot near you. And then finally, on October 4th, HFD is going to be hosting a fire prevention family day event, 10 to 2 at the Honolulu Zoo. Questions?
Can you say again what the recycle place was?
It was callto recycle.org with a 2, the number 2.
Call 2.
Call 2.
Recycle.org. Mahalo. Any questions for the fire department? Mr. Sakamoto.
Thank you, Chair Sakamoto. Again, thank you for the report. I just got an interest. A friend of mine was on Luwana Poli, Palatanos. Both sides have car-related fires. But I'm curious about electric vehicles. Have you folks been getting a lot of electric vehicles catching on fire with the batteries? How do you take care of a car that's electric and it's burning with its battery? What kind of retardant do you use?
So in this area, I don't think we have had many. Ideally, if the car was somewhere away from other people or the smoke wouldn't be a hazard, the best thing might be to let the car burn out since it's very hard to put out, takes a whole lot of water. When you're up on the highway, you don't have a lot of water, right? But if we were in that situation, we would just use water off the truck. Just try to cool it down until it stops.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks for coming.
All right, thank you.
In person, great. Skipping back again to resident community concerns. There are two on the agenda. One is temporary disability parking passes, followed by utility pole overgrowth on Kualali Street.
Thanks, Bo. Kim Tomy. So first, is Kirby Shaw online? Okay, well, I still want to thank him and the Department of Health and the Disabilities and Communication Access Board. They were very responsive and helpful when I was having my experience with Satellite City Hall getting a disability parking pass. So I have a bone to pick with City Hall. My concern has to do with their short-term disability parking passes, which takes an inordinate amount of time to receive. They come in time periods of one to six months, but applicants have to wait three to four weeks to get one. So if you're applying for a one-month parking pass, disability parking pass, you could, by the time you get it, you may not need it any longer. It took me 26 days to get my appointment from the date of my injury. In addition to the long wait time, the instructions are really confusing. The website, Satellite City Hall, says the express window can be used to drop off completed forms. Doesn't say some forms. It doesn't say specific forms, particular forms. It just says completed forms. And if you ask the chat bot, which I think is called Akamai, can I get a disability parking pass at the express window at the Windward City, Kanohe, Satellite City Hall? It says, yes, you can. No appointment needed. Okay, well, that's not true. Appointments are required and they're scheduling it two and a half to three weeks out, at least when I was applying. And there is no priority for the disabled or for time-sensitive permits. And then if you add to that the fact that first you go to the ER, then you make an appointment to see your doctor, which takes three to five days. Then you go down to Satellite City Hall and you find out inside there's a sign that says appointment needed. By then, you've already used up a week. So I just think it's not realistic. According, yeah, yeah. According to Satellite City Hall, appointments are needed to verify identity. This can be done in 30 seconds. And my understanding is that up until a couple of years ago, you could get a disability parking placard added express services window. They do it now for online driver's permit tests. So I suggest that they include that software, which they just added, to allow online disability permit applicants. The other thing they could do is prioritize so that someone with a disability who, such a short-term disability, can maybe get a sooner appointment. So I hope someone is listening out there. Oh, great. Okay, good. That's my beef. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Utility pole overgrowth on Kualali Street. Abe, were you covering that? So Hiko cut the trees or cut the overgrowth, but it's going to continue to grow again because it starts from the ground and the ground belongs to the golf course. Has anybody been at the golf course been made aware of this? It's just a phone call. Okay, never mind. Well, we'll pursue that a little bit further. Okay, so Hiko did what they were supposed to do and they took care of the safety issue.
I've noticed these vines climbing up the telephone poles too, and they get up into whatever those things are where the wires are connected. And if it's the responsibility of the property owner, that doesn't make sense. You don't want them getting messed up with that. Cutting vines will, if there's, you don't want to pull those vines down. No, but the vines are left up and tangled in the telephone lines. They're growing all the way up that high. But they don't fall down. They just dry up and stay where they are.
Sounds like we can take that for a couple more steps.
Of who? About the vines? Do you have a solution?
Kim, thank you for telling us your concern because I attended the Disability Communication Access Board a few weeks ago. The parking committee, they brought your concern up. And I told And I told them we need to bring the Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disability. We haven't had one since 2012. I brought this up at the Mayor's Town Hall, Castle and High School Capitol on May 8. And the mayor since then has not brought it back, so we can bring our concerns for disabled people to him, the mayor, his directors, to resolve issues like this. Instead of waiting for people to bring it up like you, we could have had this resolved right away. Thank you for bringing it up.
Those are two different topics, but thank you. Andy, are you hearing that about the disability? We're not calling you for speech. We're just, did you catch that? Okay. Thank you. Uh, moving on to elected officials. What? Didn't see any. Can I continue? Thanks. Moving on to elected officials. Representative Takuta. I know there's somebody online. You might want to unmute your microphone because we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Thank you for your patience. My name is Tolula, representing the Office of Congresswoman Jotakuta's office. I did share our board report for the month with the chair and I can share that with anyone that does not have it. I think the most relevant information that I can share that I think would be of use to everyone is Military Service Academy nominations are open. And for anyone that's interested, any students that are interested in that, we'll be hosting a event with more information about this on Hilo, but it will also be hosted online and I can get that link to anyone that's interested. If, please, just let us know. You can visit the website, which I'll put in the chat here. You can also call the district office if you're interested and have anyone that you feel might want to learn more about that event coming up next week, Wednesday, at 5:30 PM Hawaii Standard Time. But all the information for those who are interested is on our website. I will put the link in the chat regarding what is, I guess, necessary for those who are interested and how to contact us with any questions you may have or of any interest. Other than that, I believe some of the information that is on the board report is already passed. So I'm here for any questions. Any questions I can't answer tonight, I will share with our team and we'll get those answers to you at the next meeting or to chair by email. Thank you.
Lovely. Standby. Next is Governor Greens, Representative, online. I can see you there Diane, but I don't hear anything. Diane, are you there? Okay, we'll just move past that. And if she can work out her tech, we'll come back to her. Next is Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative.
Good evening, Chair Radke, Kaniua Board Members, Andy Kawano, Director of Budget and Fiscal Services, City and County of Honolulu. Not much to report on since the last week. We, we did have a couple requests for follow-up on the July tsunami. That was one of them and a post-mortem. We were informed that a report on the results of the first post-mortem is not ready yet. The Director of Emergency Management, Randall Collins, still working on it. And he asked our, our team to hold until next meeting, the, the October meeting, so no report on that yet. We are approaching September 30. I mentioned this last time. And, you know, from call-ins that we get from various residents across the island for homeowners that are of lower income. I want to remind everyone that on September 30, the deadline to file for the, the real property tax credit is, is due and you can get the application online. You can go to www.honolulu.gov/treasury to get your application. In terms of the primary eligibility requirements, homeowners applying for this credit must have a home exemption for both the 2025 and 2026 tax years. None of the title holders of the property can own other property anywhere. And the combined gross income of all title holders of the property cannot exceed eighty thousand dollars. We, we review those limits from time to time. If you feel that the limits have to be reviewed again, you know, please let us know or you can call Councilmember Kia Aina. We are still in the process of setting up a permitted interaction group to address all of the active real property tax bills that are still active. So with that, I'll take questions.
Thank you. One more speaker and that would be Councilmember Kia Aina.
Aloha and good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Claire Isabel.
Thank you so much. First, I wanted to follow up on the discussion earlier on Kulali Street. Interestingly enough, on September 4th, I was told by the city that Hiko said that they were not going to remove the vines because they would have to de-energize the, the conductors. And, and, and so what the constituent who contacted me said is, can I help? So we did contact Hiko directly and of course, on September 15th, they, they helped to remove the vines. So the reason I'm saying this, it's clearly going to be a long-term problem. And so I'm glad when you told me where it is. I'm going to probably go visit it because we just need to have a system in place. A DFM evidently only handles it when it's on the ground and it falls, right? So since we know it's going to be a continuing problem, then all of the various parties just need to know to take care of it, okay? We shouldn't have to be calling them to say, you got to take it down. So I just wanted to say that. Second, with regard to the tsunami evacuation, I personally had a problem with the mapping situation. And so, and so did a lot of other widward leaders. And the reason is that the county, state, and federal governments are using different links and different systems. The one for the Department of Emergency Management is an interactive system. So Irene of my office will be putting in the chat box a link for DEM. It's honolulu.gov/dm/sunami. And what they've done is they have hyperlink NOAA's maps, which were, which is, it's, it's going to be very helpful to constituents. So I just want to let you guys know that. In general, I, it's no secret that I am not pleased with the Director of Emergency Management and his efforts to inform the public of the lessons learned from the tsunami. His action report is a formal report. It's been a while, a couple of weeks. There's no reason he shouldn't be interfacing with people. We were supposed to have a briefing between the Public Safety Committee last month and he made an excuse that he could not. So we are having him and other agencies from the city come next Thursday. I'm the Vice Chair of the Public Safety Committee to report on lessons learned. And I believe the others in attendance would be HPD, Emergency Management, I'm sorry, Emergency Services, HPD, HFD, and Department of Transportation Services. One o'clock next Thursday. Third issue is Ho'omalahio Botanical Gardens. You guys probably saw on the news that we are asking for the public to choose a day. And quite frankly, the days were Tuesday and Thursday and I was actually thinking Tuesday. But I heard from a resident on Lulupu Road and she said that the trash man comes on Thursdays and it's been very, very difficult because the, the, the cars are backed up. And so on occasions, the trash trucks will not be able to pick up rubbish on Thursdays until a later time because, because the cars are backed up. So she was recommending Thursday. So I'm not trying to influence the survey. In light of her concerns, I'm going to actually go and walk the neighborhood to see if they also concur. The City Council's Agricultural Development Task Force had their first meeting on August 28. And the representative for the Windward side is Haley McKinnon, who is the President of the Waimeanalo Agricultural Association. And we have two co-chairs and one of those co-chairs includes an official from Kualoa Ranch. Lastly, I've entered the modern era with regard to establishing an Instagram account, which I've been reluctant to do so because now I feel like I have to somersault every other day to get my message out, but it is @cmkiaina. And of course, my Facebook link has always been facebook.com/cmkiaina. And that's my report.
Mahalo. The moment that we've all waited for. Questions for the Congressional Governor, Mayor, and City and County of Honolulu? Are there any questions for those representatives? I see Mr. Sakamoto's hands. At least I sense it. Was it up? It was. Dale? Neil? No? Anybody online? Uh, let's go with Dale first.
Wait, 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 me, me. Where's my raised hand?
I'm sorry? Was there somebody?
Yeah, that was me. I couldn't find a raised hand. I got a hand doing every... I can't...
Okay, so you have, you have, you have, let's take, let's take, let's take your first.
Thank you. Oh, mahalo. Me? Marie? Yes?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you Chair. Thank you Chair. Two things. I don't know whether this is for the mayor's office or the city council. But regarding Ms. Tomy's comment, comments about disability parking, can I get an answer about when and why it was removed from extended parking facilities for the disabled at parking meters? A when and a why on that? Not just a when, because I know it was a couple of years ago, but a why. And what Councilwoman was just referring to, I'd like another repeat on that. What's coming up on, I believe you said next Tuesday for this meeting about the kind? Is this open to the public?
Yes. The, the hearing is on Thursday of next week at one o'clock before the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Toba is the chair and I'm the vice chair. It's going to be an informational briefing on lessons learned from the tsunami evacuation.
So I got to do like submitted testimony or?
You can. You are able to. There's no actionable item. But what we're going to do is have all of the pertinent city agencies present to just talk about lessons learned, not just from the community, but also from the council members. Because fortunately, I did meet with a deputy director to express concerns about a multitude of things that I experienced. And I believe that other council members have the, you know, the same concerns. I'm a little upset because we didn't need an action report for a warm body to come shortly after the actual event, right? They should have come immediately and, but having said that, we're going to have one next week, Thursday. An action report is a formal document. Nothing is wrong with the pertinent director of the agency to come and say, do you have anything to share, right?
Right, right. Okay, mahalo.
Thank you.
Next week, Thursday. Oh, wait, I have the other question.
No, you have it. Okay, go ahead.
The other question was about when was a disability parking advantages removed, like in parking meters, for instance? It was a couple of years ago now.
I do not have that answer. I don't know if Director Kawano has that answer.
He's coming to the microphone right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, Andy Kawano here. I also do not have the answer and will have to reach out to either Transportation Services or Customer Services Department to, to get an answer. So we'll, we'll log it and get back to you all as soon as we can.
Marie, can you just, can you just clarify that question one more time, please?
Yeah, when was, was the extended time for disabled parking in, disabled parking eliminated? Not when necessarily, but why? It was a couple of years ago now. Why was it eliminated?
What do you mean by extended parking?
Uh, if you got two hours as a non-disabled driver or, or coach or what have you, you had, you had double the time.
Yeah, I remember now. Thank you. Got it. Appreciate that, Marie. Good question.
Thank you, mahalo.
Uh, Dale?
Thank you Chair. Dale Kirstensen, Board Member. Just wanted to follow up. Councilperson Kia Aina, thank you very much for your comments on emergency management. The last article that I have seen that's been publicly known was on August 26 and it was titled on the Star Advertisers Tsunami Readiness in an Overview. And that's the last time that I've seen anything publicly printed. That's number one. Number two, what I wanted to ask is, Andy, I've contacted the Department of Emergency Management on two occasions, have left extended voice messages, identified myself, said I was with the Neighborhood Board. One was addressing Board Member Sakamoto's request on evacuation maps that would be accessible for blind and handicap. And the second thing that I asked for is could we please have a high-definition map that could be used as part of our board presentations that we do and our update to the community and something that could be a best practice for all of the Neighborhood Boards? Two calls that I have made, I have not received any response from the office. Thank you.
Thank you Dale. In addition to Andy following up, I'll follow up myself. To this day, the Director of Emergency Management has never come to my office after I've tried to set up meetings and I've already expressed my concerns to the Managing Director. The only reason I brought the Deputy Managing Director in my office was because I didn't want to lose the concerns that I had regarding to the tsunami. And one was the maps because all of the Windward leaders had, were using different sources. Second, we had evacuation problems in, in Kailua, I know, because a lot of the contractors for projects were sent home without no relief for people who were trying to, you know, those kind of things, right? And it's just that when you do it months after, people are going to forget what, what the concerns were at the time. And that's all. So I'm going to follow up as well, but that's unacceptable.
Okay, thank you Donald Sakamoto. First question is for, or just to, for Representative Takuta. On August 20th, this vendor, a blind vendor from Hawaii gave me this information. Secretary of Defense on August 20th sent a letter to Secretary of Education to have all government facilities bases to eliminate blind vendors from their program for dining. There's about fifty-five vendors nationwide. We have one at Marine Base and we have one at Schofield. And basically, this is the Randolph Shepherd Act. It's been in existence for many, many years to help the blind to be, have equal access in the, to get a job, to do their job and do it. have equal access in the, to get a job, to do their job and do it with dignity. It's a travesty, so I hope Linda McMahon, Secretary of Defense, I mean, Education, will not sign that because it's unjust. But I did forward that to Takura's office. I hope something can be done. Regarding Andy Koano. Andy, there was a cyber attack last year with Oahu Transit network, phone lines, computers for some time. $300,000 missing from the loss of revenue from the bus. And you reported that. Thank you for doing that at one of our meetings. But Oahu Transit Services was on October of 2024, was at one of the city council meetings to give an update about that. The revenue was $100,000, it's $300,000. And Representative Councilmember Tapola, the Chair of the Committee, asked what efforts are going to be made to resolve this and not happen again. So they were doing, want to purchase insurance so that if they lose the revenue, they can get it back. But on May 9th of this year, the Citizens for Fair Aid right on the Chair of the Committee, they reported that they still didn't have the insurance yet. So I'm worried about that. And of course, September 3rd, we had the phone lines down again from 9:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And people couldn't get to make reservations for handy van or cancellations or check on their rides. It was very, it wasn't very great. The email blast from Department of Transportation came at 2:48. I got it, but didn't word out to the rest of the consumers, so they had a hotline number on that email. But when the people called it, they only could leave a message. Nobody was manning their phones. So my concern is, you know, if you have people desperate trying to get their rides or to cancel their rides or make a reservation, there should be somebody manning their phone at all times when the system goes down. And Esther, thank you for bringing up the safety. And because I talked to Director Randy Collins of Emergency Management Department the day after the tsunami. I told him about the maps. He listened to me. But I had to go through hurdles, called the Managing Director's office. They call his office and he finally called me back. So I hope he responds back to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Sakamoto. Any other, oh, by the way, questions? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to our local legislators, Senator Kejo Kalole. Somebody from his office. Senator Awa.
Hey, aloha. Hang on a second.
Yep, gotcha.
All right. It has been a busy month. Couple of things real quick. Our Genki Ball project with the four schools out at Kahului Lagoon there. We've got about 13, more than 1,300 balls put in. So so really good start. Again, that's going to take us up to January, this project. And I always want to thank the Surf Rider Foundation, Martha, who's been educating the kids out there. There's, there's been a combination of community groups and sponsors that made this possible, but it's going well. So I want to report that. We'll report on testing later. In Haleiwa, I know far away from you guys, but it's something that we're doing where we came up on the one-year anniversary of our coconut forest out there along the highway. And we lost about four trees total. That's actually, actually a win because everything else is growing. And that's in the face of CRB, which is knocking that area down. And then back at the Kahului Food Project, that's going to come up on its two-year anniversary in December. If you guys are interested, reach out to us because we're going to be doing, probably in the next two weeks, a air layering event. So if you want to come down and learn how to basically clone trees, we're going to be air layering the ulu, which by the way, 80% of them, more than 80% at Kahului site are already giving ulu and they're not even two years old yet. We're going to be air layering them. So at the two-year anniversary in December, we can cut those branches and give them out to the community. Open for questions.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, next, Representative Kitagawa.
Hi, everyone. So just a few updates. So Representative Scott Matayoshi and I just finished our sixth annual flu shot clinic, which was earlier this month. So thank you to everyone who came out to get their flu shots or who helped volunteer at the event. We partner with WCC. So thank you to WCC and Artis, as well as Times Pharmacy to do that drive-through flu shot clinic. So just want to mahalo people for that. Also wanted to just highlight a couple of things that are going on. I know this board has always been very supportive and interested in homelessness initiatives. And so I don't know if this is shared at previous meeting or if you guys know, but IHS has been doing a Kaniohi Service Fair at Windward District Park, at Kaniohi District Park, sorry, near the skate park on the third Friday of every month. And it's for people who are houseless, but also people who are just in need of services. So they're having one tomorrow, actually, 10 to 12. And they do hot meals, clothes. They have people from various services, legal aid, employment, veterans care, helping people get documents. So that's just something that if you know people who are in need of those services, every third Friday of the month till the end of the year, 10 to 12 at the District Park by Skate Park. And then I also wanted to highlight a new project that's happening. It was based on a bill that we had passed previously, but it is with noise camera installations. And I don't know if this was already shared previously. I apologize if it will, if it was. But it's a pilot project for two years. They're going to go to a bunch of different sites. Two of the sites have started already on September 15th, so this week. One of those is the H3 Freeway at the Haleko Interchange with Kamamea Highway. And so I know that's something that this board and Donald has been interested in. And so it's a pilot project. It's going to collect data on the noise that's being emitted in that area. And it'll, Department of Transportation will do a monthly report on the number of events detected exceeding 90 decibels with, during this two-year period. And that includes engines and mufflers. And then they're going to do a report at the end based on what they found out to try to figure out future legislation, to inform HPD and to figure out what we can do to kind of address that. But I will put in the chat box the link to the press release by DOT so that you can get more information and see all of the locations across Oahu. So that's just an update for you guys. If you have questions, I can take them after.
Uh, thank you very much. Representative Matayoshi. From the office. Representative Mike Lee. Rachel, you're on it. All right then. Are there any questions for our state officials? And the reason I ask and not call on folks is that I just like to gatekeep to see who's asking questions, so don't forget somebody. So is there anybody from the call that has a question or from here? I see Mr. Sakamoto's hand. Christie put her hand up and then put it down very quickly. I saw that. He's scratching. Okay. All right. I have three questions, but Mr. Sakamoto, you go first.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Representatives, for your report. Donald Sakamoto, for the record. My question to Santa Wawa. Santa Wawa, we have any federal government shutdown after September 30th? How would that affect our funding for our state if it goes beyond two weeks, three weeks, months? Would that affect our stability for getting federal funds for our state? And also Representative Kitagawa, thank you for bringing up the cameras. I've been waiting for a long time. But can, was, was there any money allocated? How much money was allocated for this two-year pilot program? I'm just curious to see what was the funding for there? And that's about it. Thank you.
Donald, Rep. Kitagawa, first real quick. Donald, yeah, it would affect us. I don't like to speak on what could happen though. I mean, we always are aware of what could happen, but you know, hopefully it doesn't get there. We don't want to talk about drama, drama where it happens, essentially. If it even gets there. Otherwise, we're just being like the news.
Mahalo. I have a few questions and concerns. First, Senator Awa. Thank, thanks for continuing to bring sustainability and our survival up to the forefront in doing the things that you're doing in the community relating to that. That's a big breath of fresh air. So keep on keeping on. We appreciate it. The other thing is, you know, we used to have the state hospital on our agenda and they would come and brief us. And years ago, the gentleman who escaped and rode a plane to Los Angeles was a big kerfuffle and there was some state hospital issues that were uncovered. And, and now I'm starting to hear some more things about the state hospital. But the more I looked into it, the more it had to do with Act 26 rather than the state hospital's procedures. State hospital has great procedures in place. They're doing what they're supposed to be doing. But by law, they're also doing what they're supposed to be doing. So are there any legislators that are familiar with Act 26? It was from 2020 and the, the quick synopsis of it is that it's not incarcerating people for misdemeanor crimes or not even holding them at the state hospital when they are mentally unfit. I might not have character, I might not have characterized it correctly. Is anybody looking at that or seeing what can be done about? I don't know if the law needs to be changed, but we can't have folks traipsing around the streets, especially if they get brought to the state hospital for a reason. And because it's not that big of a deal, they just get put right back on the street without treatment. So if nobody wants to comment on that, then it'll just be in the, in the minutes for the record.
Um, I can comment. I, oh, you want to go ahead? Go ahead, Brenton.
Well, no, I was going to say it wasn't on our radar, but we can follow up on that. Go ahead, Rep.
Yeah, I am not totally familiar. I don't remember the bill completely, but I know that the challenge is always, and I don't know all the details of the concern you're sharing, but the challenge is always requiring people to get treatment when they refuse treatment, right? So if they've already been arrested and if they've been found guilty, then that's like separate. Then they should be either, they go through the judicial system. But if they are arrested and they're not found guilty, then that's, you know, harder. And if we try to get them help for mental health issues and they refuse, then we can't force them. That's hard. And we've been trying to work on that in the legislature. We've had conversations over multiple years. But it is very difficult because groups like, for example, ACLU, you know, they don't want to, it's concerning for them and for others when you are forcing treatment on people who are refusing treatment. So we're trying to figure out how to do that because people who do have mental health issues, the concern is that they don't know that they need help. So it's even like getting, you know, trying to figure out like a guardian. Do they, can we find a family member who then says, okay, you know, they'll take over guardianship and then we can give them treatment? I mean, so it's, it's more complicated, I think, but we are looking at that. That's been a conversation the legislature has been talking about for, you know, for the whole time that pretty much that I've been in office. So that, that is something. But if it's something specific to WCC that you're noticing, you can reach out to, you know, one of our offices and we can kind of look at that and see if there's parts of the law that need to be changed or if we need to do different legislation. Or, you know, if we just need to talk to WCC or Department of Health or whoever it might be to try to address the issue. And then I just want to quickly answer Donald's question. The bill for the noise pilot program was from 2023 and I believe it was 2.5 million that was allocated under that bill.
Okay, thank you very much. If there is, I don't know how much a community member such as myself would be involved in a legislative discussion other than helping to craft a bill. But if there is going to be a discussion about that, I'd like to be involved. And there might be some other folks on the board that might want to join me as well. I see a couple more hands have popped up.
Can I just make a quick suggestion, Mo? So if that's something that you want to work on, I'd be happy to like talk with you about it. We can just do, I, I wouldn't do a, I don't think it would be like a bigger official kind of committee meeting that, you know, I'm aware of. But if there's a bill that wanted to be done, like you can either work with myself or Senator Awa or any of the, you know, legislative representatives to discuss that. And then you can bring in different community members, whatever it is, to figure out what legislation might make sense. And, and starting now is a good time because it gives us a few months.
I'd like that very much and I'd like to try to have a better understanding of the whole picture. I mean, you brought the ACLU into there. I'd like to understand what their, I think I know what their concern is, but I think there's, there's folks on the street, there's folks that live here in Kaniohi that deserve to live in a safe environment and, and should be, you know, protected.
I'll try to go look up the bills that I can try to find the last couple of years and then send you that info with the testimony, because it'll, I mean, it's all listed in that testimony.
Thank you. That would definitely be helpful. Um, I see a couple of hands. I see Marie put her hands up back in. And Laura, Laura, why don't you go?
Thank you. Hi, Senator Awa. Can you tell me again when and where the Kahului Food Project with that air layering is going to go on?
Yeah, we haven't set a date. It'll, it'll likely be either not this coming Saturday, but the following Saturday or the Saturday after that.
Okay, so where could I access that information?
Where would it be? It's going to, oh, where you can access it? Shoot us an email, SENAWA@capitol.hawaii.gov.
Okay.
SENAWA. Shoot us an email. We'll send it, we'll send you the invite once you make it.
Okay, great. I just, I'm so pleased with all the trees that you guys have put in along Kahikili Highway and they look like they're very healthy and doing very well. So thanks a lot for all that. And then Representative Kitagawa, I wanted to know a little bit more about the third Friday of every month that you're, or who's coordinating that? I will, I'll call it an outreach to the people in need. And is it like a food box type distribution or what, what does that look like and who's coordinating that?
It's coordinated by IHS and I know it's in partnership with others who, in the community. People who I, I don't know if it's through actually St. Anne's or not, but I know people who were always helping with the previous service fairs. They're also involved. So the flyer has hot meals, clothing, help with housing applications, employment support, veteran services, legal aid. They have care packages, help with healthcare and insurance applications and assistance with ID and vital documents. So they have those services that are present at the service fair.
Where can I see that? Like a flyer or a?
Um, we share it in our e-newsletter. So we've been, we, we, you know, shared it, I think, last week in our e-newsletter. I'm not sure if they post it somewhere online or not. We, we just share it from the, the organization.
Hmm, okay. And you said this is going to run through the end of the year then only?
Yes, so they have dates in the third Friday until December.
Okay. And Mo, I would like to join you on learning more about the Act 26 and anything else we could possibly, you know, give information or give input on.
Lovely.
Thank you.
Marie, did you still have your hand up?
No, I'll, I'll contact Lisa's office.
Lovely. Okay, moving on to, I took care of all the questions. Moving on to board business. We have the approval of the July and the August meeting minutes and we'll do those in separate order. Is there a motion to approve the July 20, 25 minutes? It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded. What's that?
Thank you, Donald Sakamoto, enlarged member. Concerns, July minutes. I'd like to thank Kim Tomy, our Secretary, for doing a fantastic job. Just one correction on the Secretary nomination. It was John Hewitt that nominated me at that time, so I would like to put that in the record. Thank you.
So with the additions of Mr. Sakamoto's recommendation, approval of the July minutes were motioned and seconded, and the addition of that one note. All in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, we have quorum, so those minutes stand. Now moving to the August 2025 minutes. It's been moved and seconded. Without objection? So moved. Okay, August 2025. Resolution regarding water access at Keha Pier. There is no resolution at this time, but there is still an outstanding issue. Anybody want to talk on that? No?
Dohors, but I just posed this question to members of the committee.
This is Neil Flytel, board member.
That, it seems that we are putting the onus, the responsibility for all of these corrections that need to be done, including a shower, other side of the bathrooms, et cetera, et cetera, on the canoe club. And I don't believe that that is fair, because the canoe club, I'm a member of the community, as I said at the last meeting. I use the ramp. I want to shower. When I bring my kayak out of the water, I want to be able to rinse it off. I want to be able to take a shower. I'm not affiliated with the canoe club. So I think we're sort of confusing what is the canoe club responsibility and what might be Dohors responsibility. I just want to reemphasize that.
Thank you. All right. If there is a resolution, it'll show up on one of our next agenda, our next agendas. Does the board want to participate in the Kani'ohi Christmas Parade in a float? You don't have to answer that right now, but we've traditionally done that. And if it's something that you want to do, then keep that in your mind, and I will put that on the agenda for next month. Also, be on the lookout for, and we do this every year, and Laura, thank you for bringing this up, but we designate a Person of the Year for the Kani'ohi Neighborhood Board. Somebody who's active in the community, who's doing things that we want people to look up to. And I think, I think a couple of years ago, we had three People of the Year. So it doesn't say, it doesn't have to be Person of the Year. It can be people. So also keep your thinking caps on for putting in nominations. And if you nominate somebody and that person is voted, you'll, you know, write a few sentences about them and what they've done, and let them know that they're going to be recognized. You don't have to tell them what for, but at a board meeting, and you can bring them. I don't know why I'm looking at you, Neil, but... And Rachel, everything that you get in the chat box, we don't see here? So is it possible, because as soon as you close this meeting, that chat box information disappears?
Does it work now? Okay, it does. Okay, so I can actually send the chat to the board?
Thank you. All right, moving on to committee reports and assignments, attended meeting reports. I see Mr. Sakamoto. What did I skip? Oh, thank you so much. No, that's an announcement. That's down at the bottom. Go ahead, Donald. Attended committee report.
Okay, Donald Sakamoto, for the record, I'd like to thank Chair Rattkey for doing the agenda. But there's some corrections with the members on the boards. Holly Sivia is no longer a member for Haiku Stairs and Transportation, so that should be taken off. And at the last July meeting, Chair, we voted for people to be on the board. So just wanted to let you know that I was requested to be on the emergency fairness, so if they can put on top that. And I think Member Hewitt was on the homeless committee, so that's all I have to say. But just thank you for doing a great job, Chair, for the agenda.
I'll just have to pass the great job on to Secretary Kim Tomy, who's been doing the agenda. So good for you. Thank you.
Actually, Donald has been a great help. After editing the heck out of the last one, he still found three errors, so thank you, Donald. I would appreciate hearing from other board members.
Can we get a round of applause?
Chair, I got our committee report.
Thank you.
I was chair of the Oahu Metro Paltin Planning Organization for the month of September. They did present the Youth Commission that was partly not by Hinae Settlement and kind of the organization of that. Some pertinent questions from the committee was, they didn't seem to find any representation from the Windward side. So that was a concern. And also, I did address some concerns about the, I guess, the how much the Youth Commission plays into policymaking, as opposed to what's already existing with our existing committees and legislation. So those are two concerns that were there. Thanks.
Mahalo. Any other board committee assignment, meetings, comments, questions, save rounds? All right. There is a revised Honolulu City Charter. I sent out an email to the board. Abe, if you wouldn't mind posting that on our, or have you already done that? Post it to our blog, so the community can see what's being discussed and what's possibly being discussed. There's a deadline to do that, so take a look at that. And if there's something that we want to work on as a board, or you want to do it individually, let's talk about it. Next regular board meeting is October 16th, here at Windward Community College at Halei'a'o. And we are in adjournment.